We'll call the April third meeting of the Amory Economic Council to order. And we'll have the pledge of allegiance. And Dan, will you lead us, please?
Sure. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God, in the visual.
Thank you. And now if we could have the roll call.
Ben Summerin?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Ben Blackcomb?
Here.
Plannum?
Here.
Manor?
Here.
Duly noted. We have a quorum. And item number one is the consent agenda items. Has everyone looked at those?
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda items minutes from the city council meeting March sixth, twenty twenty four, special city council meeting March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, committee of the whole March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, arts parks and rec January fourth, twenty twenty four, and recycling committee February seventh, twenty twenty four.
There a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. And now we come to the public comment. Are there any comments from the public? Your last chance as a public. And? See, I'm supposed to do this here.
I'll wait for you to say it.
There we go. Okay, when the clock is no longer green. The rabbit comes out and gives you fifty dollars.
I just have a couple of things to really comment on. One would be the developer's agreement. I guess I would like to see the before that site, I would like to see the site plan review happen. The zoning issues addressed with the zero lot line as well as the runoff pond and.
At what time?
The runoff pond that they brought up and the size and scope of that and how much that is going to cost on the project before the city would make a commitment to pay for half of it. Which leads into the next item, the housing development infrastructure policy. That's something that I think a lot of communities probably can choose successfully, but I don't think that it's right for Amory. I think fifty percent is a very high number. And if we're committed to paying for fifty percent of infrastructure amount a million dollar policies, that will add up very quickly on our debt service. And even if it is paid for through the TIP, that isn't free either, either. And the TIP levy adds hundreds of thousands of dollars onto the city levy. So personally, I think that maybe to retain the flexibility of evaluating those on a case by case basis and what the conditions of the city's finances are at the time would be of a benefit to the city. And the last thing I have to comment on is the community coordinator marketing and promotional services RFP. I was a little confused when I attended the city of the hall. So the Amory Community Club is kind of doing their thing and the city is kind of doing their thing. Which I think it's a real shame that the two cannot collaborate together for the benefit of the community. So it's, there will certainly be shared items and services between the two RFPs. I called and talked to some of the leadership at the community club and asked some questions about it because I was kind of confused. And they felt that they just wanted to get the ball rolling and move forward and that they didn't know how long the city would be taking to address this. So if there is at some point a way to salvage that, maybe after they get theirs and we get ours and maybe, you know, at that time, maybe to meet again and get our heads together and, you know, maybe see if there's some way to salvage that collaboration. And that is it.
Thanks, you're still green.
Thanks Fran.
We're there. Two minutes or three minutes, I'm proud of you. Well, that's the sound. Okay. Now how you shut it off? Eric, it just beeps a couple of times, okay. Is there any other comments?
Last Wednesday, thanks to everybody that came out to our pancake breakfast. We actually served five hundred and forty-five people-ish. So it was a pretty good turnout. Place was pretty packed, went through a lot of food. I also like to thank Chili, it's a family restaurant, and also Doug Reinhardt for donating all the food and drinks. It was really nice. It's great to have business owners that are willing to do that sort of stuff for a party department. Really appreciate it. So thanks, everybody.
It's very good, Ben. Yeah, well attended, was fun. Any others?
No.
If that, then we will proceed to item number two. This came about because we had a resignation on arts parks and rec committee. And so I would like to have the council approve the appointment of Mike Manor to that committee.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mike to the art parks and rec committee. You'll second?
All in favor say aye. Opposed? So ordered. Okay. Liquor license approval for one thousand River Place Drive, that's express lane.
Yes, so they already have a liquor license, but this, like the other one in town, also changed hands to the same company that the other one went to last month. So they need a new liquor license in order to keep operating. So nothing's changing. It's just a different entity running out of it.
And Dan, you applied the blessing, okay?
I'll make a motion that we approve that liquor license.
And just so, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt a second here.
I'll second that.
All right, just so everybody knows, that is a off sale license, like we have several of them there. It's not a service serving type license, so. All right, all those in favor of approving the liquor license for one, change for one thousand River Place Drive, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. Approval of the SEH recommended bid for the wastewater treatment plant. Eric?
Good evening, Mayor Council. We did open up bids and as we discussed at the committee of the whole meeting, we received three bids for the work with bids from Lundoff, Stab, and Mark and Johnson, Mark and Johnson being the lowest, lowest bid. We did a check with them to make sure that they're comfortable with their number as presented. They are. We vetted them as well with other work that they've done in wastewater treatment plants and feel that they are an acceptable contractor for the job. So Jeremiah and I will stand for any questions or if you'd like further explanation, let us know.
What is the timeframe that we would be looking at to have this report called done?
So. Yeah, I think the way the contract documents were laid out, we're giving them essentially two construction seasons. So assuming they would start this year, potentially finish by next fall, I believe is what we had in the contract documents.
Did I recall?
I thought it was number of days.
Six hundred days, right? Six hundred days, yeah.
So yeah, when we're talking at the committee hall, I would be around two years from now.
Yeah.
Not quite, but yeah, that's a lot of time. Yeah.
Need a motion?
We can't spend money if we don't have a motion.
Well, let's, let's spend money, I guess, so. I make a motion that we approve the contract with Market and Johnson for the sewer plant upgrade.
And just so everybody understands, I believe that was fourteen, yeah, the fourteen nine million nine hundred and forty thousand dollars, round figures.
They said it's dirty. No, so yeah, so we'll go through this, contracting, get all the contracts in place, set up a pre-con and start.
Okay, we'll vote my roll calls. Aye if you're in favor of it.
Ben Summerin?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Plannum?
Aye.
Manor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, item number five is a supplemental letter agreement with SEH for the, for the engineering management of the wastewater treatment. And you should have a copy of that.
I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental letter agreement with SEH for the wastewater treatment plant. Two figures, the construction contract administration for five hundred and thirty thousand and eighty dollars. And the task, second task, being the resident project representative services. And I'll really estimate to be four hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Well, second?
A motion made and seconded that we approve the supplemental letter of agreement for SEH in the contract. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none? We'll do a roll call on this one also.
Ben Summerin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Plannum?
Yes.
Manor?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Get your shovel. Okay, developers agreement with Valley View West Investments.
I'm going to ask every table this discussion. We'd have to get a few more documents together, so.
Okay.
If we go forward with having our two council meetings per month, that would bring our next meeting to April seventeenth, I believe. So they said they would be ready by then if we want to meet.
Okay. All right, the consensus to table that till the following meeting? All right, we'll table that to the next council meeting. Housing development infrastructure funding policy.
So with this, Patty, is there a particular reason why we went with the fifty fifty split?
I think we talked about that at a previous meeting.
Okay.
And that would be up to the developer to pay that back. So that's, that's really not on the onus of the city. It's really going to be, and they understand that. That that's, it'll be very similar to projects like we've had in the past, like we had Whistling Waters, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be sort of like that. So when they sell a property, that goes back. So it's going to be set up similar to that.
And on that same wavelength, I, you know, I had talked to you earlier today to just questioning that as well. And that's unfortunately not the way that this reads. And I think that we need to have a little clarification in the terminology in this document. Because I know for a while, or what, what we had been talking about is that we would, we would, you know, front fifty percent. And then at the point in time that lots were sold, they would reimburse the city for, you know, for the other, for the portion that the city had fronted. And I think every development is going to be different as to whether we do that or not. I think it's going to depend upon scope. I hesitate to put something out there that actually clearly indicates that fifty percent. Because if it's a, if it's a development that's fairly small, I don't necessarily know that we need to be fronting that money for them. So I question, I don't know how it would be worded in this particular policy, but if we are going to offer, if we're going to make that standard, it needs to be worded as such that we would be requiring the fifty percent that the city fronted at the beginning to be repaid. And then what increments, what timeframes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I, the more I read this, I am like, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with this at this point in time.
While we're discussing it, though, could we word it in a way where it's like up to fifty percent? So that we have some flexibility in, in what we're willing to do depending on the project? Because I, I don't know that I'm necessarily comfortable locking in a specific amount either.
And this, like I said, was just to get us in line. So we had something, some sort of policy. It doesn't necessarily have to be this, but it's just.
I think it's important that developers know that we will work with them. But to be tied into something without, you know, a bit more specific as far as, you know, paybacks and so on. I think we need to be cautious certainly doing that.
So one thought though I have is, you know, do we, you know, let's say the costs, you know, kind of put a cost minimum that we would go fifty percent.
Yeah, that's a way to do it, too.
You know, because I think really we, we want, we want all the projects. But we certainly want the larger projects. So, so if we're willing to go fifty percent, and I think that's a good number, you know, do we say any projects where the cost of the sewer is over a half a million dollars or a quarter of a million dollars or something?
I think that's really important for, you know, if you have someone that wants to develop a lot to the back of a forty.
Right.
But we got to put a quarter mile of road in and we're going to build one house. You know, and they, those things have to show that they are, that the TIF, the increment will actually pay for the costs of the infrastructure too. And I don't know if that's specifically worded like that, but, but it's, you know, it's a starting place, so.
Well, and, and yeah, and I think the other thing is, you know, yeah, you don't want the, the one house in the back forty. So that's why we, I, I do believe if we can take each development on its own and, and rule accordingly. Now, you run into the danger of, well, you didn't treat me fair because, you know, but on the other hand, you have, you know, you, you, you have, you don't lock yourself into some future situation where you're uncomfortable.
Well, in addition, I'm concerned about the timeframe as far as the payback. You know, it's, it's got to be stipulated somehow that, you know, after a number of years, you need to be fifty percent sold on what you started with. And so many years, a hundred percent. Even at that time, if you're not completely sold out, you still need to pay the city.
I like that idea where you're just on a five-year schedule.
Yeah, well, I don't know if five years is realistic, but some type of arrangement like that going into it, so. So we're not sitting here for fifteen years waiting for a developer to, you know, and that's not what they want either.
Right.
But, no, believe me, none of them developers want their money set out there fifteen years.
No, sure not, but just to.
I am just doing the developers agreements on a case by case and then we can do more fleshing out of this and figure out what you want to do, even if you want to have it at all. I mean, it's just something that.
No, I think we need to have it, but I think it has to be.
But we got to figure out what we're trying to accomplish.
Yes.
Yep, I agree. So we can table.
We have one of our developers sitting here, so. That's good. Okay, so do we want a consensus to table this for, to the next meeting again?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we'll table item seven to the May meeting. Yes, May meeting.
The May meeting or do you want to the next meeting?
Next meeting, April meeting. We aren't, we haven't approved that yet, though, so. So the next meeting is probably still appropriate. We're going to just change the next.
I guess I'll reach out with you more and just get a consensus of what.
Item number eight, community coordinator marketing and promotional services RFP. Do you want to talk about that, Patty?
Well, we have, like Grant mentioned, there's a community club has one and we have one. I went and added a few dates on there. I changed it to tomorrow's date. And then I also stated that they could submit electronically to me no later than Thursday, April twenty-sixth. I don't know if that works for you all or not, but I just said Thursday, April twenty-sixth, and that gives me a little time to look at them. And then we can talk about it at the beginning of the May meeting. And then if they have any questions, they can bring those to me by Wednesday, April seventh, so.
And I was. I was told by, they had a community club director's meeting this morning, and I think they, they approved going to the membership saying the, this is who we're going to hire. So I believe they're on schedule for doing, you know, for making that hiring process, so.
What date did you say?
Um, I said April twenty-fourth.
I think that's a little long. Let's get this process rolling. Like, I'm tired of waiting. We've been thinking about this forever. I mean, I, I would even go.
By the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, our next meeting would be, end up being the seventeenth.
So you think Wednesday, the sixteenth?
Uh, Wednesday would be the seventeenth.
Two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, that's, so that's two weeks. I mean, it's not as though we need to be making a decision, but I think having them back and, you know, because you're going to have to be interviewing these groups and such. But I, I think two weeks is plenty of time for somebody to pull something together. It's not as though we haven't been talking about this and like, I guess if.
We, do we not have several of them already anyway?
No, I have two.
Two. Well, that's close to several.
That's a couple.
Yeah, I suppose.
It was three. So, and, and I guess to respond to the point that Fran had made, I mean, I think it would be the hope that we can partner up with the community club in the interest of time. They wanted to get it rolling and we weren't ready to move on it because things take time in city government. It's a little quicker in, in the business world. So it would be the hope that we can coordinate with the community club. If it's not the same person, our people will need to, whoever, people or companies will need to work with them to make sure there's not duplication of efforts and so on. So I would be willing to make a motion to approve the RFP for the community coordinator marketing promotional services.
So Tuesday, April sixteenth deadline?
Yes. A second?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to address the marketing and promotional RFP for the April sixteenth. Tuesday? And to, so that we can make the decision April seventeenth, hopefully. Any further questions, answers?
I, you know, I'm just wondering, I mean, I, I think it's great the community club has taken the initiative. Would we be better off just seeing what develops there or? Or is, maybe that's what we are doing. I'm not real, real sure.
I'm sorry, I.
So, so they're going to come up with what, what that looks like and maybe even a name. I don't know, right? So now we still want to work with, we definitely want to work with them, but should we see, you know, where they come up with and then?
I think the issue we run into is that the community club only has so much funding to put toward this. And the hope is that the city will be able to partner financially on the project. And so in order for us to financially partner, we have to go through our RFP process. So that's where we get.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's where we get to where we are currently.
Yeah, you're right about cumbersome it is. But it's, you know, the two entities that make it cumbersome, so.
Okay, well.
And, and I'm with you. I, I don't think it's good business at all for the community club to endorse one entity and the city to endorse the other entity at the end of a year's contract, which I think is what everybody's been talking about. If that changes, then we should do a proposal, a joint type proposal. But because this was the first one and it's disjointed, now we're, you know, in this process. At one time, we talked about, about just hiring or making this a one-year contract. And I guess, you know, depending on, I think that's probably still an available option to do that. But, but this RFP that will, should solve the problems and the yes, I think so. So, a motion on the floor? You need the motion restated? You all understand? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Comprehensive plan RFP. This is a, to go out for an RFP to update the, or assist in updating the comprehensive plan, because there, there are how many pages to the comprehensive plan? Lots. And it, and it requires a pretty good look at it. And so this would be a plan to get some additional, I hesitate to call it engineering help, but at least some help in the, with people with that expertise to assist us in making that plan. So this is to go out for an RFP for it. And we're required to do this by, we should have probably done it a couple of years ago. I think we're supposed to do it every five years and it's been eight or something like that.
Yeah, I think it's ten.
I think it's ten years.
Ten, total. So we need to, we need, it's something we need to do and this will facilitate it pretty rapidly.
So these are the amendments to our current comprehensive plan, so we have to do some changes to it, obviously, as already in place. And I set this up with the same dates. I said Thursday, April twenty-sixth.
And I don't think, personally, I don't think that's, that's not, not obnoxious. We can, we can live with that. That doesn't need to be done.
It's dated however, May first.
That, that's, that's what was in your packets, but I had to make some changes.
Okay, so it is going to have like April four, current date, okay? And then a review for RFP's back the twenty-sixth, I think you said? Okay.
So we'll, for May.
Do you have any questions? For clarification, I need those by April seventeen, so.
Okay. There a motion?
I'll make that motion that we require requesting RFP for the comprehensive plan.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded to go to an RFP for the assistance in revamping the comprehensive plan for the city of Amory. Any further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So declared. And we also have an R. Uh, we also have an RFP for an outdoor recreation plan. Um, this is something that came from basically a meeting that we had with the, with a person with a lot of interest in the, in the recreation areas for the city of Amory and, uh, it, one of our was a engineering firm, I forget. MSA suggested that if we had a, inj- a plan in place for an outdoor recreation plan, um, that we would qualify for, uh, fairly, um, uh, substantial amount of funding from the state and federal government. And so, uh, while we have a, a recreation parks and recreation committee, this would not usurp their authority or their, their mission. But it would give us an overall view of what our recreation plan could be and, uh, would be presented for us. And if once we have it, then as we wanna develop that particular part of the recreation plan, uh, we would have the ability to do that, so. Uh, or at least apply, which is, it's one of the requirements for even applying for those grants, so.
And this, um, we're not as pushed to do it at right now, because we, we've passed that time when we can get it funded.
The grants for this year are pretty much over with already for doing summer rec type things, but.
I wanted to get something in place that we can moving forward.
Right. Because then we can be all set to apply for grant money for.
Exactly, which I understand typically open in the late fall or, or winter for the following years, uh, to do that. Uh, and some of the, some of the, you know, things have been on the wish list for folks in the community for a long time, i.e. water park, um, land, uh, you know.
Or splash pad.
Yeah, the, those kinds of things, and, and, uh, so I think that's a really good idea to have this done, so.
While we're talking about, um, planning for things, if we go out and get help for these plans, is there a way that we can set up some sort of public hearing or public workshop or something where community members can give feedback on what they'd like to see in these plans? Um, I think that would be very beneficial, given that we have a lot of really active members of the community right now that probably have feedback on where we're moving.
My guess is, my guess is that that's probably part of the, of the recreational plan. You have to have hearings and, yeah, community meetings and so on, and we certainly can include that in what we ask for in the in the comprehensive plan, so maybe we can get a new fire truck, right Chuck? All right. All right, um, so.
Same dates? April twenty sixth.
If that's enough time to do that, I would think. Okay.
And then, any questions, clarifying questions by Wednesday, April seventh, or excuse me, April seventeenth, so.
And we may not be able to have, uh, public hearings by that time, because, but, uh, but at least we'll have an RFP for it, yeah.
I'll make that motion that we proceed with an RFP for the comprehensive outdoor recreational plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, motions made and seconded to, uh, have a request for, uh, an outdoor recreation plan. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? So ordered. Number eleven, ordinance oh five twenty twenty four, creating a finance committee for the city of Amory. Um, this is, has been brewing for several months. And is, uh, I think it will take us back to a way that we operated at one time. Um, not that that's necessarily the be all and all, but I think, uh, it gives maybe a better chance to look at individual things, uh, in a setting where they can be hashed and trashed, if you will. Um, uh, and so it's just a little more personable and a little easier, I think. Cause those committees then will bring recommendations to the council, who will also get a full swing at it. Uh, if you will, and, uh, it gives everybody a little more, uh, another oar in the water to get the, you know, those things to happen, so. Um, you've read, and this been before us for several months. Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance zero five dash twenty twenty four, amending the code of ordinances for the city of Amory as it relates to establishing or re and I'll reactivating the finance committee. And it's specific duties. I'll second.
Okay, motions were made and seconded to approve ordinance oh five twenty twenty four, uh, regarding chapter fourteen, section fourteen, for the creation of a finance committee. Uh, duly noticed. Any further discussion? Approving that ordinance by roll call vote.
Ben Summer.
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Manor.
Yes. Item number twelve, ordinance oh six twenty twenty four, follows along with the finance committee, and this is a personnel committee. Um, and they would, there's a list of the tasks that they would be responsible for, uh, to and bring, again, all of it comes back to the full city council at a, at a regular council meeting, but, uh, these committees detail three council people with the direct responsibility of knowing about finance, personnel, and public safety, uh, as their various committees, so. Um, I think, again, these, these two follow together very well, and, uh, you can see what they are responsible for. And so, are there any questions regarding personnel?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance zero seven twenty twenty four. Sorry, I'm on the wrong one, and I, zero six twenty twenty four, uh, regarding the personnel committee and reinstating it.
Any second that?
Motion's made and seconded to approve that zero six twenty twenty four. Is there any further discussion? Questions? Once again, we'll have a roll call vote.
Ben Summer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Blamum?
Yes.
Manor.
Yes.
Thank you, passes unanimously. Item number thirteen, oh seven twenty twenty four. This creates a public safety committee. Uh, this is not the same committee that that, uh, used to roam around the city hall. This is, uh, does not deal with the fire department. And the reason for that is that the fire commission is already created as a, uh, multi-governmental issue with the townships, because they are all uh, one hundred percent partners in the operation of the Amory Fire Department. Uh, they're all, we all pay taxes the same amount, whether you live, uh, uh, on South Street, or whether you live on Second Street on the north, or any place out in the uh, community, there's a representative based on population that, uh, is part of this committee, along with the fire chief, and, uh, Amory has two representatives on the committee, Lincoln has two representatives on the committee, Blackbrook and Alden each have one representative due to the fact that we have substantially smaller uh, dollar values to protect out in those, those two areas, so, um, so that defines it. Um, so these, this will deal, will be at least part of the group that will, uh, be responsible for union contracts with the, uh, police department. Um, basically, any issues that come from the police department will go to the public safety committee for recommendations to the council. Any further questions?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, create that public safety committee, ordinance number zero seven two zero two four.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded that we approve, uh, oh seven twenty twenty four regarding the creation of a public safety committee. All those, any other questions, comments? All those in favor? You can ask a question.
Is there any thought of having a few members from the community also on that committee?
Not at this time. Never say never. Um, all right. She heard the motion in the second?
Asked a, a question, so, so with this committee, I mean, is there any voting or anything?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so, so to that comment, I, I like the idea of getting community members, but with, I, I don't necessarily know if they should be voting members. Okay, they'd be more of an advisory member. Yeah, I'm just throwing, and we don't, this obviously isn't part of the motion, but I'm just.
I think it, you, you know, it's like all of the ordinances that we have, they're all subject to change at one time or another, find something that, that would work better or doesn't work well, uh, I mean, they are ordinances, and with, that's how we, how we live politically. But that doesn't mean that once it's in place, obviously, because we're replacing what we had before uh, with these, so, um, could it be? Yeah. Again, that would have to come back to the full council for approval, but
Right.
to call people in that might be interested in it. I guess what I wouldn't personally like would be, um, to be, to see the committee crowbarred into doing something, because twelve people show up and, and.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's a voucher, so, you know.
Yeah. So I think the rules of engagement, i.e. with a five-minute com- uh, comment and so on are very appropriate, uh, even on committee setups, uh, you know.
Well, because they're still public meetings and we can.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, and they're noticed, they'll be noticed meetings, they're, they're not, uh, you know, you don't get together for coffee. Uh, although I will tell you that when it's a three-person committee, if two of you get together, that can be construed as a uh, as a quorum, so, um, that, there just needs to be some caution, and, uh, obviously, Dan would be part of the, part of the meeting.
Well, I, I think anytime you can get input, that's a good.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, but, or good, let me rephrase that, good input.
Yeah.
Okay, if, if it just, you know, if the community involvement is just kind of a complaining section with no constructive ideas, then you're wasting their time, but.
That's why you get to borrow the five-minute timer.
Okay.
If you're on the meeting. Any other questions? We have a motion. Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay. My motion is second to approve ordinance oh seven twenty twenty four regarding chapter fourteen, section fifteen, the creation of a public safety committee. Anything further? All those in favor, my roll call.
Ben Summer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Blamum?
Yes.
Manor?
Yes.
Okay, we're getting down to number fourteen, and this is, uh, ordinance eight twenty twenty four. Chapter eighty-six, section six and eleven regarding standing committees. And, uh, this is regarding action on committee reports and meetings of city council. You wanna flesh that out a little bit, Patty?
We have two different add-ons. The first one is eighty-six dash six, and we're adding committee of the whole. And the structure of that has changed. Um, they'll make quarterly. And it's a workshop session where there is no formal action taken by the council. Um, it'll be conducted, uh, with the following types of discussion. They have citizen questions, concerns, discussion as requested by the mayor or all the persons, review of policy action for future meetings, uh, updates on department operations, preliminary policy and strategy discussions, staff reports and recommendations and presentations by other groups and agencies, and it's a meeting. So we will have a notice, we will have an agenda, so it's no different than any other meeting that we hold with the city. The only difference is, it's for, you know, there's no formal action taken. It's just a workshop and it's discussion.
And specifically, I think it needs to be said that those meetings will not only be open to the public, but the public will be encouraged to come. You know, not, I hesitate to say more, cause I encourage you to come to these meetings too, but, um, uh, if you have an idea and you'd like to get it before the council and argue your, your points with the council, I think that's the time, a play, a time and a place where you can come and say, no, I think you guys are all wet, this is what you should do, and we can say, nah, probably not. Or probably that's a really good idea, but a time where we'll get more dialogue in a less formal setting, and yet still make things happen, and I think those, those are important things to the community. Um, I'm sure there's some kind of a word that says, uh, you know, it's open and diverse and so on and so forth, but, uh, but that's the intent, is to get more public folks, more, you know, a lot of good ideas out there. And, uh, if you keep them all to yourself, then not much happens, so.
They happen all over the state.
That's the only, uh, report then that we'll get from department heads, is that once a quarter?
No, no, uh, I think, at least my intent is to have the, the first meeting of the month. Uh, start out the same way as our meetings did last time, so you guys are all still on the hook for your reports. It's just that what, what we'll, are able to discuss, we don't have to put off the committee as a whole for another month. Uh, so I'm anticipating that this'll, will, uh, streamline the process without getting to be so fast, or faster than we should be. Um, I've often said government is best when it moves slowly, and, uh, that hasn't changed at all, so.
And on that note, um, the second part is eighty-six eleven, we're changing the meeting structure. Um, currently, we have it the first Wednesday, but this is going to be the first and third Wednesday, each calendar, at the hour of five. So, uh, if they fall on a legal holiday, we'll be held the next second or two at the same hour in place, as otherwise, or as otherwise designated by the majority vote of the state council. Um, they'll all be held here in the city hall, including, um, special and adjourned meetings. Unless another location is designated by the city council at previous meeting. We had a meeting out on Main Street. And we sat and talked with the constituents at that meeting, and we broadcasted, and that was in another location, but anyway. I digress.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Dang, we should do this, or dang, we shouldn't, or.
Well, you know, I guess I, I just would like to say, you know, I'm, I'm excited about some of these potential developments, and I I really, you know, want the developers to know too, that we wanna make this work for them and, and. Yeah.
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to per ordinance zero eight dash twenty twenty four, uh, chapter. uh, chapter eighty-six, sections six and eleven, uh, amending the city code of ordinances for the standing committees um, for committee of the whole, and then also um, the scheduling the meetings of the city council.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to approve oh eight twenty twenty four. Any further questions or comments?
Guess my only comment would be that I sincerely hope that people come to those quarterly meetings and talk with us.
Exactly.
And really, any, any time of the year, please come talk to us, we can only do the best we can with the information we have, so.
Anything else? Taylor, you're on, roll call vote, please.
Ben Summer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Blanum.
Yes.
Manor.
Yes.
Sword unanimously. That's, that'll be the last, no, I guess we probably got to vote on my roll call too.
Yeah.
Item fifteen, the sale of Soldier's Field. Uh, the property uh, IDs are before you, but basically it includes soldiers, it's the Soldier's Field, as you commonly know it. Um, with a couple exceptions. Uh, this is a plan to make a permanent alley on the south end of Soldier's Field, so that the folks who live and use that and have used that, and it's a, currently a non-designated uh, driveway, basically, but it's on city property, and the city doesn't, I don't know that we don't maintain it at all, do we?
I'll just tell them, I'll get it.
Yeah, so, uh, so the intent behind this would, or the uh, sale would also include designating that as a public right-of-way, and uh, the ability then to for the folks that live on there to use that, continue to use it as it has been in past times, so. Um.
I guess I'd like to say that I spoke to two different attorneys on this, and we are not holding a public hearing on it, because it is no longer um, it doesn't fall under the criteria of it being a public space where we would have to do that. Um, we are good to go um, in regards to putting this up for sale as this piece of property, so. And I guess, Robin, you can take the floor and just kind of go back and talk about what we talked about in closed session, and kind of what your plan is, and.
Good evening, my name, as we talked before, my name's Robin Haffner, um, kind of guess going to be the developer of that, if we, if it goes through. My plan is uh, multifamily homes, um, majority of it, and then we might do some single family in the back, and uh, the biggest issue we're having, and that's why we're buying this on a length of time, is I don't want to put money into, trying to put money into something I don't own, but that if anybody's, well, you guys are coming better from Amory more than I am, um, it's always wet, so there's some way we got to lift it, um, work with the DNR to uh, find some way for drainage, um, and I'd like to have some green space in there, or a park or something, but as Mayor talked about that, we are gonna, my plan is to put a road in, but I won't do it one way, so we'll have the alley, I don't want to take away from the homeowners on the south side of it. Um, because that lot line goes right up to most of the driveways or some of the drives back there, that'll be a designated alleyway. Um, that'll be off of the cul-de-sac of the main road that comes in off of Memorial, right?
Yeah.
Well, Harriman will be on the alley, Memorial is the one that, by the, that'll be the main road that comes into a cul-de-sac, and then overlook towards the lake. Um, but, yeah, I want to research and try to figure how it works, it's a beautiful piece of property that I think would make a nice place for, my goal is zero entry housing for either starter homes or people that are getting my age or older, that uh, retirement type home with the lake right there, so. Um, I guess I'll take any questions um, that anybody has, and try to answer them the best I can.
You had mentioned previously about putting a pier off into the lake right there, is that still your intention?
Yes, it is, well, that depends on how the pro- however we write it up that park area, I know uh, Sarah, if that's okay if I say it, um, wanted to keep that as part of the city, but I'd still like to put out a dock um, out into there for people to go out and sit and fish, look at the lake, but uh, that would be on my dime as the people that buy these houses or twin homes that I put out there would be able to use, but so would every citizen in the city. Um, just a common area for people to go visit. But yes, that is private too.
And I think the intent is for the city to own, own, he's volunteered to buy the dock, and the city will, you know, maintain it, because it would also be open to the public.
Correct.
And uh, similar to the uh, overlook that's already there. And so, you know, we'd take it, put it out in the spring and take it in in the fall, and, and uh, but it would be a donation, and then the city will maintain it, so.
Okay.
For the, for any of the residents that want to come down there, so.
Okay, that's right.
Thanks, Robin.
Another question? Thank you.
So with that said, are we going to remove PID ending in ten seventy from the um, sale?
You're gonna have to actually do like a certified survey map, because that park is part of the other side of the.
Yeah, they're half, okay.
Yeah, it's really weird, but.
Then, let's just carry on.
Yeah, so that, we do have to we have to delineate that.
Or we can just sell the whole thing.
Pardon?
Or we can just sell the whole thing, as long as he has intent to do something with it.
Yeah, then, then we.
I, I think you're right on keeping the park, because I feel like there's a lot of people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be.
Yeah, it's a workable way to keep.
Advantageous to the city to
Right, right.
Keep it, the park personally, but um, because we're gonna have to have a certi- certified CSM on it anyway, so. Okay. Any other questions?
Are we, do we need to act on it?
On the sale?
Mm-hmm.
This is to approve the offer to purchase, right?
Looking for a motion?
Said you can't take money in without a motion either.
Right, yeah. Well, I make a motion to approve the sale of Soldier's Field uh, described as PID two thousand two oh one ten seventy zero, and et cetera.
I'll second that motion.
I have a question, you need to stipulate in your motion that you're gonna have a certified survey map done to put that alley in place, and to keep that piece of the park, because otherwise, if you do it like this, that's gone, basically. So I think you probably need to include that in your motion.
Okay.
You need to make your motion.
I will amend my motion to include whatever you just said. Yeah.
Want to read that back to?
Yeah. There you go, Taylor. I suppose you, you approve the sale with the exception of that one parcel, is that?
Just gonna read it back. Yeah, two minutes, Taylor.
Well, I have Roger moves to approve the sale of PID two oh one dash zero one zero seven zero dash zero 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 and two zero one dash zero one zero six five dash zero 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 zero, with the exception that a CSM will be created to keep the land by um, self-twin and to create a city alley in the existing alley. Does that sound good to you guys?
Does that accurately reflect what you want?
Yeah, I, okay, um, so the so creating, when we create a city alley, we own that strip of land that the city does?
Just.
Yeah, I think so.
And, and that's what you want, I'm just saying.
Yeah, so I think it's going to end up.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just said, just to help out, you also own the road that comes in off of, so you own the road, the cul-de-sac and the alley, so you have to do the maintenance on it.
Ah, okay, sure.
So you own, you own any of that.
Okay, and that makes sense, yeah.
I'll own the my group will own the company, the buildable property, but the actual infrastructure, we'll own, I mean, you own the water sewer, that runs in there too, because I'm, we'll get into it, but on the backside, without easement for water and sewer that runs across, yep, across the green space, um, you guys will own that also.
Sold.
But that's for, yes.
So quite a funny question, then.
Yes, you know, that's.
So is that something that can just be done after the fact, like, once the land is sold, and he determines where the city street is, and that land will come back at that point?
Roads will have to need city approval of the water. Yeah, so yeah, that would be an after fact.
Okay.
So, in some of our city properties, property owners own water and sewer up to like the center of the road, and they're expected, if something goes wrong, to deal with that, is that? Okay, so is that the same expectation with how we're setting this up then, or?
They own the main, and all the other stuff will be good.
Okay.
Usually like three feet past the curb, you get alone, um, that right-of-way area, and that's where I'll attach.
And this permanent alleyway that you're talking about on this map is the access road that we're talking about? East West Road?
Yes.
And what is back here on the east side, right where it says thirty-three? Is it just a lot line that goes?
At the end of that road?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's the barely rest of the park we're on.
So I think it's been seconded, right?
Yes, yes, I seconded.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion that's made and seconded to approve the sale of Soldier's Field with the aforementioned.
The exception to do a CSM to keep the part of the land by the lake and create a city alley in the existing alley.
Okay, and most of that, the developers agreement and all that, will come back to the city again, anyway, after Jerry owns the land, so. Okay. Any further questions, comments? Once again, the roll call vote.
Ben Summer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Blanum.
Yes.
Manor.
Yes.
So approved. And now, we're three minutes behind the schedule, but.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.